We're live.
All right, thanks, Owen. My name is Paul Tegney Ferry. I'm the Chair of the North Borough Zoning Board of Appeals. It is August 22nd and past the hour of 6:00 PM. This meeting of the open, this open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law March 29, 2023. All members of the North Borough Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed to and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the zoning board of appeals to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to North Borough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Fran Baxter?
Here.
Suzie Sizelka?
Here.
Brad Blanchett?
Here.
Jeff Grabowski?
Here.
Jeff Leland?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Here, and Bob Frederico is stuck in the audience.
Okay. Bob, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Hey.
Hey, there he is. Hey, Bob.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So just very quickly, just some meeting ground rules for presenters and or applicants listed on the agenda. The Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until a floor is deal to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. You could raise your hand on the Zoom function, and that's how we can identify who would like to speak next. Each vote taken by the Board of Chair will be conducted by a roll call vote. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. By phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the Chair. Please note that part of your phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, please click Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. All right, so we can start with the continuation of the continuation of the consideration of the petition of David Cooley for a special permit to reconstruct the non-conforming structure destroyed by fire, a special permit for use in groundwater protection overlay district and site plan approval for a proposed five unit 4,600 square foot multifamily structure and associate site work on property located at 129 Maple, map 52 parcel 171829 in the residential city zoning district and groundwater protection overlay groundwater protection overlay district area 2. So this applicant has requested that this be continued to our September 26th meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, so roll call vote. Fran?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Jeff Grabowski?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Mr. Chair?
On the agenda, yeah.
Just to clarify, so 6:00 PM?
Yes, September 26th.
26th meeting at 6:00 PM?
Yes, sorry. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is a continuation of consideration of addition for South 3305-309 Main Street LLC for a special permit for use, special permit for groundwater protection overlay districts, and special permit with site plan approval for the operation of drive-through food service at the existing structure of 305 and 309 Main Street, map 47 parcel 7 and 8 in the business each zoning district and groundwater protection overlay area district 3. The applicant has reached out to us and requested an extension or sorry, continuation to the September 26th at 6:00 PM meeting. Is there a motion for the continuation?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to continue this hearing to our September 26th meeting. So moved.
Second.
All right, Brad made a motion. Fran seconded. Roll call vote. Brad?
6:00 PM, please.
6:00 PM, 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Jeff Grabowski?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. So next up is a continuation of consideration of the petition for 78 W LLC for dimensional variance for insufficient area. Special permit to extend a non-conforming structure, special permits for multifamily use in the downtown business district and groundwater protection overlay districts area 2 and 3. Special permit to extend a use into a more restricted groundwater protection overlay district by no more than 50 feet. And special permit with site plan approve, site plan review for proposed multifamily expansion to an existing structure at 78 West Main Street, map 63 parcel 55.
We have Brian Waterman, Marshall Gould, Sam Lotuff. I think that might be it for this application.
Okay, so I've added a bunch of people. Marshall, can you hear me? You're on mute right now? You're currently on mute?
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I think we may also have, in case it's necessary, our traffic engineer is Scott Thornton, and we have Tom Riordan as well. I don't think.
Okay.
They are not in the audience at this time.
I see Tom Riordan's name right there, and I see Scott Thornton.
Looks like I'm moonlighting as Marshall Gould tonight, but I'm using Marshall's login, so that's.
Oh, okay.
I'm a late addition.
All right, Marshall, do you have everyone you need for this? I think that's Brian Waterman.
Is, and Carolyn Burke and Barry from Waterman are also here.
Yeah, WDA.
Yeah.
Correct.
Carolyn, is Brian with you?
Brian's there as well.
I'm remote. Now I see you. Okay, thanks, Brian. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. So obviously, this is a continuation of the hearing from our, I guess it was the May hearing, but I guess, do you want to just provide sort of just a quick update, Marshall? Yep.
Yes, and I have, I guess, a formality of procedure. I did go back and I watched the hearing again, and I noticed that I had forgotten, I guess, that at the end there was a motion to close the public hearing. And I think it was intended to just postpone it and close it for the evening, but I think in the minutes it may have come up, I have it here. It says motion to close the public hearing. So because there were some things from Concom and elsewhere, I would hopefully ask, unless I'm wrong on this, that somebody make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Marshall, on the same night that they made the motion to close the public hearing towards the end of the meeting, they made a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
So it should be all set.
Thank you very much. I guess I didn't watch the last whatever number of minutes after hours. So yes, I do have a couple of comments, and I think we can make them short. In going over my notes and the notes of the people on my team, the issues that were raised were conservation, and we have good news on that. The turnaround radius issue, the size of the parking spaces and drive aisles, the solid fence versus the split rail fence, the snow removal. And there was a question raised about the fire department headquarters being close by. Is that going to present a problem? And somebody else suggested that there may be a problem asking how can a multifamily development have fewer vehicle trips on a daily basis than the former office use? That is why I have our traffic engineer tonight. That's the only reason I have him. And I know that Scott has another hearing tonight. So I would like to, if that question was not answered, and I think it was, but in his traffic report, he showed the reasons why it's going to be less traffic than what was there previously. And through the Chair, if anybody has any questions they want to ask about that, we have Scott Thornton here with us who can answer those questions before he has to depart for another hearing.
Okay, thank you, Marshall. I mean, I guess, Scott, do you want to just give like a, just a high level on what you have found with the traffic with regards to the the property and use?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Scott Thornton with the Nest Associates. And as, as Marshall indicated, we did do a traffic assessment in February this year and looked at a number of things, including the trip generation of the site and both as a, under its former use and under the proposed use. And you know, these trips are developed based on statistics and counts that are conducted of similar uses, office buildings, small office buildings, as well as multifamily developments. And in this case, using the source that for the vehicle trip generation, that's a standard requirement for mass DOT, for MIPA unit, for most towns municipalities in Massachusetts, which is the IT Trip Generation Manual. The, the use, the, the former office use would have generated more traffic than the proposed multifamily use. And you know, there's a couple of different ways to look at the trips for the office use, whether it's, whether it's through the number of employees. We had anecdotal information that as many as nine employees were, were there at the, at the energy company. Comparing that with four units, you know, the overall trip generation rate is such that on a, on a daily basis, we would expect the office building to have generated about four more trips for the weekday morning and weekday evening time periods. The office would have generated about one additional trip and in the evening about two additional trips. So you know, this is, the, the, this is a small traffic generator, this, this, the proposed use. We don't anticipate any issues. We also looked at crash data. We looked at site distances. We don't, we don't see any real issues related to traffic with the site. So that's a quick summary. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, can you remind me like roughly how many parking spaces are currently exist in the property? Do you know, off the top of your head?
Um, I don't know. Marshall, do you have that information?
I can tell you that because they're unlined, it was difficult to tell, but their pavement went well back into the groundwater area too. And people would park where there was room, and there were quite a few pickup trucks and deliveries by trucks associated with that business. So they used to go back and park in the rear of the property for as much room as they needed to park.
Okay. Does anyone else from the board or staff have questions with regards to the traffic or the safety? I guess just to give Scott some time back. I don't see anyone with their hands up right now. But, okay. Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Scott, we're all set, I guess. Thank you for appearing tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you, and I appreciate the courtesy of letting me go first. Thank you.
So you know that we also have the owner, and we have the architect, and we have the engineer. I think it's probably a good idea for the engineer to address the issues of the wetlands that were questioned last time and where that now stands. I know Brad wanted to be sure that there was an order of notice, and I appreciate that, Brad. And frankly, there were a number of good comments, so we did go back. And Carolyn, is it going to be you or Brian who's going to address the issues?
Hi, this is Brian Waterman from WDA Design Group. I'll, I'll take the swing on the, the wetlands and the Conservation Commission if you'd like.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Brian. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we, we had an initial hearing with Conservation Commission on July 10th. We had received mass DEP comments only two days prior. So we, we had an open hearing on the 10th with the Commission, outlined the, the plan changes and also addressed some of the deep mass DEP comments. Those were mainly related to the rain garden and restoration of riverfront area as well as the Commission requesting information and an outline on the restoration of the majority of their 25 to 35 foot setback area, which pertained mainly to the, as Marshall pointed out, the paved parking area projects well behind the building. And so part of the plan was to remove 1,600 square foot of that pavement and restore that area with native plantings. At the time, what was considered a rain garden, mass DEP did not want a rain garden, which is designed to infiltrate within 50 feet of the wetland. So in discussion with mass DEP, they had us change that to riverfront restoration area and remove the rain guard moniker. And no, no credit for infiltration within the rain garden. So that was the one change with DEP. So we had several comments from the Commission as far as just looking at drainage and some of the stormwater controls, addressing some of DEP's comments. And they were generally in support of the project on the 10th, but wanted their conservation agent to take a really good look at the stormwater, the overall plan, and some minor changes. So the meeting was continued to August 14th. We addressed the minor comments that they had. Their agent came back with a few comments, mainly in regard to maintenance of the vegetation around the vinyl fence, maintenance of stormwater controls, things of that nature. So we addressed those items. The plan, we sent a plan to Lori the other day that is a color rendering of the plan that was approved by the Commission. And the Commission closed the hearing and approved the project at this meeting on August 14th, and they have issued an order of conditions for the project this morning, which we picked up and will have recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds today to allow the project under the Commission. The Commission did question on the westerly building addition, you know, why that was placed there and what, under their bylaw, would the natural benefit? And they felt that the restoration of that large paved area back to vegetated areas, removal of the pavement, and adding stormwater controls to a site that has historically had no stormwater management. It was sheet flow through the parking lot. It was paving, sanding, plowing into the adjacent wetlands. So now that those things have been taken away, we've added numerous stormwater controls. The entire roof area for the pre-existing building and the new buildings will be infiltrated underground. So the Commission, the reason they voted to approve is that there are a lot of improvements to a historically disturbed site that offset the minor addition to the west side. The northerly addition is essentially over area that was already developed or paved. So they like the fact that the majority of the historically disturbed buffer zone towards the wetland and the 25 to 35 foot setbacks they have, which have been historically paved, were now going to be restored and that there are now stormwater controls on the site. So they did approve it and issued an order of conditions. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Brian.
Sure.
Suzie, do you have a question? You hit.
Did we get that order of conditions? Did I miss that email or did we not get it? I'm just wondering.
Get an unsigned version of the order of conditions. I was unaware that it was actually signed today. So I do have that, and I did review the conditions. I can email it to you now. Actually, I can't. He just sent me a paper copy instead of a typed. I can ask him to email it if you'd like.
Um, so can I ask that, can I ask him a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure. Yeah, sure.
So what you're saying is they didn't like the building going into the no build zone, but they thought it was okay because of what was seen done with the parking lot and going into the wetlands?
Correct. The building addition is actually, the westerly building addition is into an area that was historically filled. There was a cesspool there. There was a level fill and also the slope on that side is nearly 100% invasive species, so it'll be removed as part of that building extension. And the building is no closer than, it's actually 10 to 12 feet away from the wetland where the pavement was up to four feet away, which is now going to be pulled back. And we're restoring that area between the building addition and the wetland with removing the invasives and planting native species. And we're also adding a fence along that side with, with signage, wetland signage. So yes, they felt the extension into an historically damaged area with no work within the native wetland system that's there and restoring the rest of the area offset that minor building addition. And Lori, I apologize. I thought Vincent had sent you a copy of the signed one this morning, but we just received it this afternoon, so we could easily send you the signed one if you, if you don't get it from Vincent.
If you could just email it, that'd be great.
Will do.
And I can forward it to the ZBA now.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So they, yeah, I was just trying to think. Sorry, I'm just, I was just trying to figure out, I, because I was looking at the map. So when, so they were talking about the part that juts out to the side because the north is the part where the fence and everything is. I'm just trying to get a clear aspect from what.
That's fine.
Just because we didn't have the conditions, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The north, the north building, I don't know if.
It's the back of it.
Can you bring that plan up, Lori, or? Is it possible to bring the plan up, the color one? It might be easier to discuss.
In that way, for the audience.
Share our screen. We can share our screen if you like.
Yeah, that would be great.
It's always better for the applicant to share their screen.
Yeah, Carolyn, if you could share that colored plan, it might be easier.
It's sharing. Do you see it?
You want to zoom into the, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could zoom into the north.
And then for any viewers on, in the YouTube, any, any North Borough residents might be wondering like, what are they talking about?
Yeah, no, that's fine. So the north building addition, the, the existing building is kind of in the light, light brown and then the darker brown.
Yeah.
Yeah, the north building addition is, is over area that was already had deck or fencing or was paved. So there's really a wash on that, and it's actually area of pavement that's being removed between that building and the wetland. The wetland is highlighted in the lighter green to the north, a lot behind the tree line there. So it's really the building addition to the west, which you can see goes into their 25 foot setback line. But that area had historically a cesspool associated with the building. The building's being, the cesspool's being abandoned, and it's connecting to town sewer. We're removing the invasive species and then restoring between the edge of the building and the wetland with native plantings. And then as you can see, to the north of the building, we have the riverfront restoration. That whole area is paved currently, so that's pavements coming out and that's being restored with native plantings. So you're not only restoring wetland buffer zone and the majority of the 25 and 35 foot Conservation Commission setback, it's also area of riverfront and flood plain that will be restored instead of paved.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Suzie. Are you, you have any other further questions?
No, not right now. I was just trying to figure out where north and west and.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I know, it gets confusing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fran, did you have your hand up?
I did, but they answered the question. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Fred. Are there any other board members that have any other questions with regards to the the conservation meeting and/or plans?
Okay, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Fred.
Just real quick, since we don't actually have the list, I know Lori has said she reviewed it and it's going to be sent to us. I just wanted to confirm for the record that the applicant is agreeable to all the conditions that are in this signed document.
Marshall, do you want to answer that question? I assume you, have you guys had a chance to look at all the order of conditions?
I have not, but the engineers did that, and I guess I'll defer to Brian. Brian, you and Sam have been talking about this. Is everything in the order of conditions satisfactory for the project?
Yes, I mean, we have, and I have not personally gone through every condition, but in speaking with Vincent Vignali and the draft that we had, there's nothing beyond, you know, outlandish request. It's, you know, construction period monitoring, maintenance of erosion control barriers, the updating of operation and implementation of operation and maintenance plan, which they had requested that Mr. Lotuff sign as responsible party, which he did and was submitted back to the Commission. So no, I, we're on board with the order of conditions and the conditions, special conditions that are attached.
Thanks, Brian.
Sure.
If there are no more questions about the order of conditions, perhaps if the Chair would allow, can I just then say that we have two other engineers on here that will talk about the revisions to the parking spaces, particularly the one at the end. There were questions, I think Suzie is the one who said, what if you have a large vehicle? Is somebody able going, going to be able to back up and turn around? And it was Randy Waterman who would discuss what could be done, but now it's shown on a plan. So I don't know whether it's going to be Barry or Carolyn, but.
Probably means Barry.
Okay, so through the Chair, can he just use this plan and describe those minor changes?
Sure, just one sec. I guess for Lori or for Bob, was there anything with the Conservation Order of Conditions that you guys had comments or questions on so that we can sort of just close that loop?
I, I wanted to call your attention. I did just email the signed documents to all of you, so you should have it in your email box. But there was a condition. But there was a condition that I thought would be of interest to you. And that's number twenty-eight, which says that sodium chloride shall not be used as a de-icing agent at the sites, no storage areas shall be located outside wetland areas. Accumulated sediment shall be removed from the snow storage areas needed. If removed snow amount can be stored within the approved, cannot be stored within the approved snow storage area locations, the surplus snow shall be removed from the property and disposed. And it goes on from there, so that complements a condition that I was suggesting to be included within your decision, which says that in no event shall snow, the snow be pushed into the rain garden or wetlands. Snow piles shall not exceed four feet in height. Excess snow shall be disposed of off-site via truck within twenty-four hours of the end of the snow event, so that's condition L.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. So I guess Bob, did you have any other? I didn't see your hand raised, but I just wanted, in terms of conservation and Lori, I just got your email. So we can take a look at it as a board and see if we have any questions, but my understanding is that the applicant is fine with all of the conditions that the conservation board has set forth, so. Marshall, if you want to move on to the engineering plans, we can do that.
So Barry, while you have that plan on the screen, do you want to address the slight alterations that were raised by, I think, both Paul and Suzie at the last meeting?
Sure. Good evening, Barry Atchison with Waterman Design. The, it's my understanding, the question was, was there enough room for vehicles to pull into the parking spaces, specifically the last one or on the northern side? And then be able to back up and move out of the parking lot? The parking lot itself, the spaces have been large design, they're the, a large parking space, nine and a half by twenty, twenty feet.
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen with a twenty-foot rear drive aisle, and actually it's twenty-one feet from the end of the parking space at the end of the parking area. On there, we showed a large, it's a, it's a typical size vehicle, like a RAV4, it's labeled as a Nissan van on there, it's got a wheelbase somewhere between a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and sixteen inches. It's designed for the typical residential home vehicle. We did look into showing a larger vehicle like a Chevy Suburban to pull in there and it is able to pull into the parking space and back up, it will take back up, come forward, back up again, and then it can clear on out. It should be noted that the orange hatch on the right-hand side or eastally side, that's just a small six-inch curb with grass on the side, so it's not restrictive to the fact you can put your bumper over the edge and so forth if you need to, so there's it's designed and will allow for vehicles to enter back up, turn around as necessary and depart per the regulations and standards and stuff.
Okay, it also looks like the the garbage was moved from sort of the right side.
Western side to help facilitate that turning.
Okay, and the fence along that sort of back line there is no longer a stockade fence, but it is a four-foot solid vinyl fence.
Correct.
Solid fence.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, are there any questions from the board or staff with regard to the engineering changes here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Brad?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the parking space, it looks like it's a barcode. And when you are turning out it to you're looking at it's to the right of the dumpster, there, that will not be a parking spot, is that correct?
Correct.
How are you going to prevent that from being a parking spot?
We can put striping on it. Label it no parking, put a sign up that says no parking.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so when you guys came in front of us a few months ago, you guys were saying this is a tight spot, this is a tight area, I get it. So just to make sure, like, if that car with the barcode, I'm going to call it the barcode, tries to pull out, if there's, there is a car there, then it's even tighter than tight, so I'm just trying to figure that out. But, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brad. Lori or Bob, do you guys have any questions or comments with regard to the engineering changes?
No, I'd be happy to add a condition of approval that would require them to stripe and sign that turnaround area to prevent parking.
Mr. Chair, I've got no comment, everything appears to be okay.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Lori. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? All right, I don't see any. Marshall, do you have anything? What was on your list?
I just want to point out Suzie had asked a question at the last hearing about would there be any traffic issue with the new fire station? The fire chief responded with a letter that I assume has been sent out to you, but he uses the opticon system and he said it is not a problem. So the fire chief was satisfied. And I think the only other thing that you talked about was removing the snow within twenty-four hours and a letter was presented from Orlando Contracting that they will do that and that they do that for multiple businesses. So, and they are close by, so Northborough is an adjacent town to where they're located. And they do other work in Northborough as well. I think those were the only issues that I had when we finished that last hearing.
Okay. Yep. Yep, I agree, at least from the list I had. So thank you, Marshall, and the rest of your team for providing the updates. So this is still a public meeting. So if there are members of the public who wish to ask a question or provide comment, if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand on the Zoom application, or if you are on your phone, please dial star nine at this time. Okay. I don't see anyone with their hand raised in the audience. I, Marshall, I assume you have gotten a copy of sort of the the rough decision with all of the ZBA comments and that your team does not have any issues with any of the conditions?
I have the one that had been given to me back at the end of May, around the time of the last hearing, I don't think anything big has changed. I've spoken with Lori, so we're satisfied with everything that we've talked about.
Okay. Great.
So this is one. One point for the record that was stated last time, and Lori does reference it in her May decision that one of the special permits for expansion of a non-conforming building is not applicable anymore. It turned out it was an interpretation and Lori found the interpretation to say that this does not come within that umbrella, so to speak, because we're not doing anything new to the front of the building.
Okay. Right, this is a, there is a variance and then effectively three special permits.
I have the site plan review, a variance, and the three special permits.
Right, yep, one of the special permits is with a site plan review.
There were also two waivers requested.
Yep.
And I had given a letter.
Look, Lori, I think you had those in your, your comment letter. One was with regards to the parking of cars in front of the structure, right?
Yes, so there are two waivers that are included in the draft decision. The one waiver has to do with allowing parking to be located closer to the front lot line than the front line of the principal structure. And the second one is a partial waiver of the requirement that parking facilities with more than five parking spaces shall be bordered on all sides except for required access drives with a buffer at least ten feet width. So the buffer is a variable width, so it's four feet wide at the narrowest and ten feet wide at the thickest.
Marshall, was there anything else that you or anyone else on your team had to add to?
I believe we have covered everything that we have talked about and I want to thank the board for your consideration. We thought we had a very good plan going in, but with some of the comments of the members and the changes, it's clearly better now than it was before, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marshall, and I appreciate everyone on your team's work from WGA and the applicant as well for all the updates and meeting with conservation, so definitely appreciate all the work there. Are there any other comments from, or questions from board members for the applicant? If not, then I would entertain a motion, Suzie?
Before you close the public hearing, if Jeff Grabowski could just read his statement into the record. So Mark Rutan is not here this evening, which means that one of the alternates will be promoted. He was not here at the public hearing on May twenty-third. So he has to attest that he reviewed the tape of the meeting and all of the exhibits in order to make him eligible to vote.
Okay, Jeff, before you start that, Suzie, did you have a question for the applicant or?
Yeah, I just had a, I just had a question if we could go back to the, I'm sorry, about the, the parking in the barcode car. And the turnaround when you had said the large truck. And you had said that Suburban might have to do like a, like a K, like the K turnaround. You know, like the inching in and the inching out.
One inch and one out.
Yeah, so how would that do? So that's like for backing up, so pulling in. I, so you might know this from my Zoom picture, but I drive a minivan. So I'm just wondering, like, is pulling in as easy? And also, how will this affect this snow removal when, like, say, like, what if you have many large cars in there? Because it's going to be like a four-family, like a four-family, so what if you have a bunch of large family cars in there? I'm just, I'm just trying to, like, picture this and make sure that it's safe, because it is a tighter parking lot. I don't know. And like Brad said, like, what if somebody, like, what if you have a UPS van in there, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
There's a whole lot of ifs, but what we've designed is for a large for a standard vehicle plus large standard vehicles, you could put eight minivans in there and they all back up the same way. Yes, on that last lot, it'd be a little bit more difficult because you're not able to turn back around and it would have to be what you call a K type turnaround, but it, you're not stuck in there. And there's.
Yeah, can I get, yeah, you're not going to get stuck with a, because I forgot that that, the, the one that shaped like home plate, I forgot that that was like, that's the dumpster, is that a dumpster or a?
Yeah.
And is the dumpster fenced in with a hard fence as well, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's spacious with a minivan.
Yes, with a, that's with a Suburban, so we did it with a large vehicle, like the what you're calling barcode, it's actually AutoCAD generated and provides us with specific vehicles, that one happens to be a Nissan minivan of sorts.
Yeah.
It's still got a about five inches less wheelbase than a Toyota Sienna or a Honda Odyssey. The Suburban that we did has another fifteen inches of wheelbase, so. You shouldn't have any problem getting in and out of there. The regular minivan or the one that we've shown here has plenty of room left, right, and center.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because it's like the parking lot itself is a little staggered, so I didn't know, like, how that turn base was right there, so I was just wondering. Because I, it didn't occur to me when you were explaining it that that was also the the, the garbage area. But, so, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Thanks, Suzie, Lori, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, Suzie, I just wanted to reassure you that the, the parking space and lot configuration is consistent with our zoning bylaw standards for parking lots. So the size of these parking spaces is no different than any of the retail establishments that we have here in Northborough. So if you're able to park your Suburban in CBS without going over the lines, then you shouldn't have any problems parking your Suburban in this parking lot.
Okay, I just got worried about the snow removal aspect and, you know, all of this overnight.
Thank you, Lori, thank you, Suzie. Are there any other comments or questions from the board or staff? Okay, Jeff Grabowski, do you want to?
Yep.
Be teller of this? Yep, thank you.
Yep. I, Jeffrey Grabowski, alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, certified that I examined all evidence received at the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three session of the Zoning Board of Appeals relative to the application of seventy-eight West LLC for property located at seventy-eight West Main Street, Northborough, Massachusetts, for a variance of eight thousand nine hundred forty-one plus or minus square feet of area to satisfy the minimum lot size requirement of twenty thousand square feet within the groundwater protection overlay district area three per section seven oh three oh three OB two of the Northborough zoning bylaw, special permit for multifamily use in the downtown business district per zoning bylaw section seven oh five oh three O, special permits for multifamily use in groundwater protection overlay district area three. And to extend that use up to ten feet into the more restricted groundwater protection overlay district area two per zoning bylaw section seven oh seven oh one OC three and five. And special permit with site plan approval per section seven oh three oh five oh A two to allow a multifamily dwelling containing four units and construction of a one thousand five hundred eighty square foot building addition, parking and associated improvements on the subject property located at seventy-eight Parking and associated improvements on the subject property located at seventy-eight West Main Street. Said evidence includes a video recording of the May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three meeting that I missed.
Okay, great, thanks, Jeff.
Sure.
Um, so if there's no other questions or no other comments from the applicants or boards or staff, um, and there are no hands up in the attendees of this meeting. Um. I think we can entertain a motion to close this hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Hi, Fran.
Uh, I move that we close the hearing for seventy-eight West Main Street.
Second.
Fran has made a motion to close the hearing. Brad has seconded the motion. Uh, this will be a roll call vote, uh, Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Uh, Suzie?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
Aye.
Uh, and I am an I as well. Okay. Uh, thank you, Marshall, uh, and team for, uh, the presentation today, and appreciate, uh, all the work you guys put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice.
Good night.
Alright. Um, so next up on the agenda is to consider the petition for variance submitted by Ohm Sri Jagadamba LLC for relief from the requirement to submit a disposal works construction permit issued by the Board of Health. With a building permit application to allow reconstruction of the structure on the property located at twenty-seven Belmont Street Map one oh nine parcel twenty in the Highway Business Zoning District and Groundwater Protection Overlay District Area Two.
All the applicants to speak on this, uh, application is Jay Patel.
Okay. Alright, Jay, I'm moving you to be panelist, uh, please let, please let us know when you can hear us.
Hello?
Hi, Jay.
Hi, thank you, everybody, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, so I, I guess, Jay, if you want to just give us sort of a, a rundown on, you know, what it is that you're looking for, what your project entails and uh, why are you requesting a variance relief, uh, for this project?
Yes, thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate it, um, your time today. The, the project, you know, we have, we have applied for our reconstructions after the fire that happens on August twenty twenty twenty-one, and we have gone through the extensive drawing and all other things. And at the end, we come to find out about the septic upgrade. The cost of septic upgrade, the weight will be close to one point five million dollar or thereabout. Doing the sewer extensions that will benefit everybody on Lawrence Street would be, uh, we don't know, because we are doing the design, but will be around two million dollar. Uh. Lori was the one who bring up with a great idea back in February, that there's a mass grant available. Uh, you know, a public-private partnership, so we decided to do the pub, uh, sewer line using public-private partnerships and, and then do everybody that the corner, that the street that was left. When Walmart did the sewer extensions on the auto street all the way in, to that, so that these sections of Lawrence Street has been isolated and missed, so we tried to do that. Uh, also, you know, we have, you know, if we do the mini treatment plant, it's gonna take almost the same amount of time, because there would be a mass D E P involved. There's a consent degree that needs to be done and all other stuffs, um, all technical review and all other. We are in touch with DPW as well as Lori, we have just submitted our new design that has all the surveying and all that done. Way late in the evening, unfortunately, my engineers did not provided it earlier, but we did forwarded that email to, to Lori. The, we have, we used to have ninety-nine rooms, we down to with the new design, we have ninety-one rooms. If it's needed to be, we can go below ninety rooms to, to be less than ten thousand compliance as well. So I have done after, you know, uh, uh, after that, today later in the afternoon, our average occupancy between twenty twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, I excluded the COVID because that was a um, uh, liar outlier because of the conditions, the hotel was closed, uh, due to the Massachusetts regulations, but we are running around less than seventy percent occupancy on an annualized base. That means, you know, septic, it's, you know, existing septic on the day of fire was completely in working conditions. Septic system has been old, um, i- 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 but it has functioning. So if we get the extensions and, and approval of this, um, variance, we will have two years' time, out of two, two to three years' time to get the sewer, sewer line installed. Out of two years, one year will be reconstructions, we are extensively renovating the motel six. As we speak, we'll, you know, have the sprinkler fire alarm system, HWC, the air makeup systems, we will bring the building to, to, to the code. So one year, what we are asking in, in, in general is between twelve and eighteen months, if it takes that much time to do the constructions of the se- um, sewer connections, so we can still stay in the business. We have a real financial hardships, to date, we have spent over a hundred thousand dollars just on an engineering. We have spent, you know, we have paid twenty-eight thousand, over twenty-eight thousand dollars to the town of Northborough for the building permit. We have no income, as of today, will be a little over two years, two days over two days, uh, two years, and we have no income. We have mortgage, we have insurance, we have property tax, we have, we have all the ongoing expenses. So all we are asking to help us use the existing septic system while we do the new sewer extension. Uh, cost of mini treatment plant is also very extensive, so why don't we, you know, make a, a better business decision to help everybody on the Lawrence Street to, you know, utilize and use the sections to, 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 uh, and then get opportunity to connect to the town sewer. Um, we have, you know, get some comments from, um, uh, Lori, um, and, and an answer to, to her, you know, her, her concern. The septic system, if I do get a Title V inspection, which is only required for the buying or selling of the property, would it pass or fail, I'm not sure. Uh, uh, because of the new, that the ta- Title V inspections will require to the new standard. So chances of getting it passed probably will be limited or maybe non-existent. But septic is functioning, we have maintained it, uh, during the annual inspections from the building department or Board of Health or routinely, we didn't have a, any issue as related to our existing septic system. All we are asking to use it for about two years while we complete the design and installations of the sewer connections. If mass grant, mass public-private grant, which is, I mean, based on the law is common, if it's not available, I'm sure, you know, I can, you know, we, we can fund the project and then get it done. Uh, idea is if I spend one and a half million dollar just for myself on a mini treatment plant, or can we, you know, can we work together smartly as a, as, as everybody in the Lawrence Street can benefit out of it? Um, we, we are working with, uh, uh, Mr. Carpenter from DPW. Original, the, the original email that Mr. Carpenter sent, that was just the very, very preliminary design, you know, from my engineer. We did submit an extensive design today, and we had asked Mr. Carpenter to have a meeting, uh, so we can discuss whatever the, the town requirements are, and we wants to make sure the systems meets or exceed the town of Northborough, uh, sewer line connections and requirement. We will most, you know, we will do with everything here to make sure it meets or exceeds the town DPW director's requirement. Um, it's hardship, if we are continue, if we don't do anything and we don't open, we cannot open for another twenty-four to thirty-six months. One, one year, so if we get the permit or variance today, it will take us twelve months just to reconstruct the building and ready to open to apply for the CEO. So twelve months, we probably won't use septic system at all. Um, the, uh. Also, r- right now, we have some other minor concern. Uh, we have a lot of break-ins in last six months, we have six break-ins, even after the property has been completely closed. As of la- as of two days ago on Sunday, um, somebody broke the window on the second floor. Climbed the tree, went inside, still eight to ten TVs, damage on my, you know, office equipment, they were there. And, 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 you know, i- i- it is a nuisance at the moment, if you, you know, by me constructing and reopening, that corner will be maintained, you know, we will do the nice landscaping. We will make a curb appeal much better while we still working on the sewer connections. In, in short, you know, we wants to work with the town, we wants to be partner with the town, but we need this relief. So we can start making some money and then start, even if we have to do it, if masks grants not get approved, we can fund the project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Um. So I guess I, I want to start with, uh, Steph, uh, and, uh, Bob or Lori, um, so is it my understanding that in order for the applicant to try to do any sort of remodel or fixing of this property, he needs to have some sort of either a plan or a working septic system, Bob?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, um, um, I'm not gonna read you the whole thing, but it's right up front in one of the first chapters of the zoning code, then any alteration or construction permit um, for any alteration of a building, um, first requires either a, um, uh, an approved plan from the Health Department for septic system. And in which case, um, I believe, um, it's gonna have to come from the state D E P, because it's over a certain amount of gallons per day demand. Now, or a, um, a, a sewer connection permit that's been issued by the Department of Public Works. Um. This is a situation where I actually have the permit application in my files, but I can't issue the permit. Um, unless I have some sort of either a, a septic disposal permit from the Health Department or something for a sewer tie-in approval from the DPW. Um, I have neither of those, I believe the applicant has tried to do both of these things, uh, in, in, in prior months and weeks. Um, neither of those projects has, has proven successful. Um, and, you know, you know, submitting something today for, for your consideration tonight. Um, I, I, it's up to you, but I, I, it's this is a, this is something that needs to have a lot of discussion about it.
Okay, so I, I guess, so just so I, I understand thi- this, um, right? There was a fire that happened on this property, he wants to come in and start, you know, doing some work on it, and so he needs to either have a, you know, working functioning septic system, right, in order to start doing the work, or he needs to have some sort of a, uh, sewer connection permit plan, which that is the, the mass works trying to tie in on Lawrence Street, and that's literally just a plan, right? Um, the, the work doesn't need to necessarily be completely done, right? Just like, hey, this, this is going to be done at some point over the next timeframe.
Right, um, we would need to have some sort of approved plans, the shovel does not have to be in the ground for any of this stuff. Um, but, uh, like I said before, the plans that have been submitted up until now, and none, none of it is, is, has been workable. Um. So, yeah, we, I, I, I don't need a shovel on, in the ground, I, I, I need certification from either department.
Okay, and so just my understanding for a sewer connection permit plan, like is that, is that, uh, you know, is that something that the applicant has to present, is that the, the DP, the Northborough DPW? Like, where does, where is the sort of, uh, the bottleneck in terms of getting the, that sewer connection permit?
The sewer connection permits are issued through the DPW, uh, Sewer Department. Um, Scott Carpenter has reviewed at least one plan, um, which failed. Um, the town does have certain standards and requirements for, uh, sewer designs and tie-ins and whatnot. Um, I can't speak beyond that, cause I'm not an engineer. Um, but, um, it, the, a, any kind of a sewer tie-in would have to run through the DPW.
Okay. So I guess, Mr. Patel, on the sewer connection permit plan that was submitted to the DPW, do you know what the issue was with that plan, or did Scott provide feedback?
The, the, yes, it was very, very preliminary, we, we have a, you know, that was submitted back in, um, um, May, I believe, and it was very, very, you know, after we have meeting with, uh, Mrs. O'Connell's, yeah, Scott, Mr. Carpentiers, uh, town engineers, uh, and I, I believe it was a meeting with my engineers and my engineers has, you know, is, is, is working on with the DPW requirements and it was the original plan that was, that was not approved, it would have require uh, can, when, when, uh, everybody on the Lawrence Street connect, it would have like called, they called the plug and play, I don't understand the terminology about it. But say I'm a residential and I need to tie on that line, I have to have a pump station. That means that we have, everybody would need a pump station, small scale, small scale scales of pump stations. That was not, um, that was the design that Mr. Carpenter did not like, so we, today, after correcting, it was a very extensive work, so we did all the surveying, wetland delineation, uh, grading and everything, so it takes time to design the systems and we have submitted, and, and we still have a pump stations that, that needs to be located, and that's where we need to have a meeting with Mr. Scott Carpenter. But while my, my issue is while that can be done over a twelve months period, while I do the reconstructions of my hotel, I think the timing should work, you know, the district requirement that they have to have the permit, um, now from the DPW or Bo- or Board of Health, if we can waive this requirement and work with us, so we can have the building, because it's gonna take me twelve months to rebuild the hotel. So I want to use time effectively, so we can work and then, and then get the, the projects moving.
Okay, thank you. Um. Lo- Lori, before I get to, just, you, Bob, do you know what the typical turnaround time is for the DPW once a sewer connection permit plan is submitted?
I, I have no idea.
Okay, that's one, uh, Lori, you, you have your hand up, sorry, I know you've had it for a while.
My, my major concern is that, the whether the existing septic system functions, so I understand that two years ago before the fire, the septic system functioned fine. However, it's my understanding that the motel has been vacant for the last two years, and of course, a septic system relies on microorganisms to cleanse the septic. So if there is no fluid in the septic system for a period of two years, then I am highly suspicious that the microorganisms that treated the, the effluent are no longer living. So that is my concern, that the existing septic system won't function anymore. So that is why I put in my comment letter that I want some sort of proof from an engineer from the Board of Health, that the septic system is functional, and I did reach out to the health agent. And she had no record that a Title V has been done. And she recommended that because of the period of time of inactivity, that, uh, Title V must be done to demonstrate that the septic system still works. Um, so that is my number one concern. And then my second concern, which of course, you know, I'm happy to hear that if the town is unable to get the grant that you plan on paying for the sewer extension yourself. Because I do have extreme concerns. Uh, because of course, the, the town is under an obligation to adopt. Because of course, the, the town is under an obligation to adopt. A multifamily by right, multifamily by law. By December thirty first, two thousand twenty-four. And if the town does not comply with that requirement. Then we are going to be shut out of virtually every state grant, including the Mass Works program. So we won't even be eligible to apply for that grant anymore. So I suspect that it is an extreme likelihood that you will have to pay for the sewer extension yourself. So I just wanted to make sure that you take that into account. And that you have the financial resources and that you're planning to pay for that sewer extension. I do applaud your decision to extend the sewer. I agree that that will be a huge benefit to the town of Northborough and to the other users along the stretch. So, you know, I, I definitely give you kudos for that. And I'm happy to help you in any way that I can with the Mass Works grant application. Should the town comply with the state law to adopt that multi penalty by law.
Thanks, Lori. I guess, um, just piggybacking off of that for a sec, Mr. Patel, do you know what the status of the septic system is currently?
No, I don't, because, you know, it's been closed for two years, so, you know, um, was it working the day of? Yes, but you, you know, my rea- real concern, uh, Ms. Chairman, is this. Twelve months is going to take me to fix my property anyway, so I, I wouldn't have to use it for twelve months. We can, you know, we can conclude at the same time and, and, and working. So we can, if we need to do the little upgrade to the system, so it's been functional, we can do that while, while we working on it. And, and then my major, major thing is, if, if I spending one point five million dollar on a mini treatment plant, that's only for myself. I rather spend that kind of money for, for the, you know, for the better of the Lawrence Institute. Has been left out from when, when the Otto Street Walmart, um, sewer connections was granted. We missed it, you know, and, and so rather than, you know, dwelling on, you know, what did we miss? I'm, I'm an opportunist person. I rather see glass half full. I want to make sure that everybody who left out on Lawrence Street, they can, they can use these things. Because right now, the design we are doing from Route Nine, just not from my hotel. I could have stayed under the two hundred or three hundred linear foot of, you know, what, uh, sewer line that, but we are not. That the design we submitted is from Route Nine to the Lawrence Street, um, to the Otto Street that we've been trying to do. We wants to making sure the corner get redeveloped. And, and, and stay as, as a nice, you know, welcoming effect for the town of Northborough. And, and that's what I want to do. Look, if I wait for two years to do this, and then one years for my fixings, the property. I'm only asking for real, in real time, twelve months extension. And I think, um, that will benefit, you know, everybody. It's beneficial to the town, beneficial to myself. Beneficial to next, next restaurant, uh, that has been closed, and then beneficial to everybody who is on the Lawrence Street. I personally think it's a value that town get out of this, this project is, is, is very huge. The area that has been left out. We have done the wetland delineations. We have done the surveying. We have submitted. And, you know, I will be the first one to tell you, am I perfect? No, I'm not a perfect person. But I will listen to the DPW Director, Town of Northborough, uh, Lori and everybody. And I'm very thankful to Lori, who, who actually was the first one to bring about the Mass Save Grant, Mass Works Grant. So if we don't get it, I have to spend that kind of a money. The estimate for the Mexican restaurant is over one point two million dollar, what I have been told. Do I have that in front of me? No, I don't. Did I ask for the proof? No, I don't. But what I see, if Mexican restaurants spend one point two million dollar, if I spend one point three, one point two million dollar. Look at it, we can get this line done. It's, it's very, very, and I'm willing to do it for myself. I'm, I'm, I know, I personally think that it's value of getting the sewer connections. And redeveloping the Route Nine and, and that whole Lawrence State will, will be much appreciated by everybody, including town.
Okay, I guess. So I guess the answer is, no, you haven't had the septic tank inspected, so you don't really know what the issue is, right? So I guess, Bob, ju- just a quick question for you, right? Like, for the septic tank that is there, right? What do you need? Right? Is it like an inspection from the, the Board of Health? Is it inspection from a, a third party? Like, just, just from my understanding, like, what, what is, what is that process like?
I'm looking.
Because, because I, I imagine it's not a, you know, we're throwing out numbers here. But, you know, if you get it inspected and it passes, right? And everything gets approved, then he can continue starting to rebuild stuff.
I'm, I'm looking for the email that was shared from, um, Kristen Black, our Health Department Director. Basically, what she's saying is that, with, with the reduced occupancy of the rooms. And if Mr. Patel could prove that the demand through an engineer, a septic engineer. Um, is less than ten thousand gallons a day, that would put it back into local authority. Okay, but that inspection needs to be done, and a Title V inspection needs to be done. Uh, before, um, Ms. Black can make any kind of a determination, and that has not happened yet.
You said it was less than ten thousand gallons is the number?
If a septic system is, uh, uh, over ten thousand gallons per day, it's a state DEP issue. If it's below that, it's a local Board of Health issue. Uh, Mr. Patel has, has, has made some adjustments, uh, in the occupancy load of the hotel. And, you know, if that information can be conveyed to a Title V inspector and have a Title V inspection. Submit that package to Kristen Black for review. He may be okay.
Fran, sorry, you have your hand up.
Thanks, alright, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around the whole thing. So if the variance was, is being requested, so that he can work on his building. Without having to address the septic at this moment. And if at the end of that twelve months, he is ready to open his doors. The septic either has to pass Title V, or he has to have a plan in place, well, has to pass Title V. And he has to have a plan in place for his sewer connection. Right? And if at the end of the twelve months, he's not ready, he would have, I mean, we could actually say the variance is only for twelve months. That you can work on this building without having the septic evaluated, because nobody's going to be there other than people working.
Well.
Being asked of us?
Well, yeah, um, you're asked to kind of put the, um, uh, horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse, or whatever it is. If you grant the variance, and I issue the permit for him to do the work in the building. No matter what happens, if at the end of that work, if there's not a viable and certified septic system or active sewer tie-in. And at which point they would have to be, the work would have to be done in the, in these installations complete. There'll be no occupancy certificate that I could give.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Fran. Uh, Lori?
Yeah, my, my concern is also what will happen, uh, with the waste in the interim. So assuming that the ZBA allows you to go forward with the building permit application. Then you're going to have workers on site. So how are you going to deal with their waste if the septic system is not a functioning system?
I guess, Mr. Patel, you want to take that one?
I, I can, I could have a portable, um, this is, um, system that they can come in and then take care, because there will be about six to eight workers working if the septic system does fail. But I will have the inspections done meanwhile, so address the issue of the septic Title V working or not. The other issue that, you know, Mr. Federico brings is, is, uh, horse before the carter. I had, uh, I had talked with Christine, Ms. Christine Black, to reduce the number of room from ninety-one to eighty-three, eighty-five, eighty-seven. Whatever that number will be, to bring it below the ten thousand, we will work. And we will fix the septic while we still continue on the sewer, sewer line design and everything, if there is not. I think within twelve months, we will know very well, you know, where the septic is, uh, sewer design is. If sewer design i- is, 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 is not moving forward, then I have no choice but to address a mini treatment plant. And I, I'm willing to do that. So I'm, I'm trying to utilize the sources of the fund better, so we can, we can get maximum benefit out of it. I have no problem. I understand. I have, I have asked, um, uh, Bob to, to issue construction permit subject to CEO at the inspection, if the inspection of septic failed, don't issue within CEO. I am willing to take their conditions. I have no issue with, with those conditions. But we will have a, we, we need time to start constructing the building and stop my bleeding. You know, right now, if I do nothing, I have to have twelve months while the septic design, sewer design. Is being addressed. What I want to do concurrently, working on both issues, where, where we can benefit out of it. That makes sense, Chair?
Uh, yeah, I mean, seems like you want to get to the end result, but, you know, I think the, the, at least for me, my, my concern is, we really have no idea what the status of the septic system is. You know, I mean, if, if there was, you have done a inspection and there's issues with it. Or whatever sort of reporting, engineering, remodeling that needs to occur has, and we have that information. In front of us, I think it would be somewhat easier to have a decision there. Because then, you know, we're giving a, you know, we, we're make, trying to make a decision on a variance. When, you know, to Lori's point, there's really no plan for what's going to happen in the interim while there's work being done. We don't know if you actually, I mean, you can do an inspection on the septic system and it could be fine, right? Or it could pass the inspection and then you could just continue on without having to come to get a variance.
Can I make a suggestion, Chair?
You can provide the comment, sure.
Okay, um, I will, I will have, and I will have third-party inspections done on my septic system. And, you know, we can have either subject to, or we can have a continuation of the meeting.
Okay, um, are there any other, um, comments from, or questions from the board at this particular time? This is a public hearing. Um, if there is anyone in the attendees, uh, that wishes to make a, a question or a comment. Please raise your hand on the Zoom call, um, or if you're on your phone, please dial star nine. I don't see anyone up there. Um, I guess, just for me, at this particular time, I probably need more information. I would prefer to have a better understanding on where the septic system stands. Before I make a decision. I, I don't know how anyone else on the board feels. Fran?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I mean, I would agree. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Patel's suggestion of either making it a condition. Or continuing it, um, for a finding, or my preference would be to request a continuance. And get an actual finding before we make our decision.
Susie, give your hand up.
Um, I, I agree on the continuation, because I, I don't even know what we would make a decision on right now. Because we would need either information from, um, Ms. Black or Mass DEP. Or from Scott, DPW Scott. And then we don't know if it would be going down in occupancy for the hotel. We don't know if there would be the porta potties that would have to go there. We have, we have no idea, um, what would need to happen and what plan would be in place to even make a decision. So I, I would like to continue and not make a decision tonight. I don't feel comfortable voting, um, on a decision, so that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie. Uh, Brad?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, same thing. I mean, we definitely need more information. Even if we did close and make a, made a decision tonight, either it's now or at the end of the, the road, end of the project. We need more information on this septic tank. Um, it's just, it's been sitting dormant for two years. So, yeah, I like to, and so you obviously ask, ask for other, uh, comments and feedback, but I'd like to make a motion to continue.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, just, just again, you know, and, and back to some of my earlier questions with Bob, right? I mean, if you do an inspection for your septic tank, um, and there's, uh, issues. You know, being able to understand and to sort of provide a, a punch list of what those issues are would be helpful to us. Um, I also think sort of, you know, continuing down the route of, you know, going down the sewer connection permit planning. Um, and trying to figure out, it'd be better to understand what that process is, how far you've gone, how much have you talking to? Like, are you added, it, it doesn't seem like we're at a dead end at this point, because there are available options for you to go down, right? I mean, if you have a, you know, I guess for, in order for Bob to give you a building permit, so you can start working on this project. You either have to have a sewer connection permit plan that's been thoroughly vetted and approved by the DPW. Which, I'm not, I, I don't know what that work entails, but that, that seems like it's just a plan. There's no shovel in the ground at that point. Or a working septic system, and you've done sort of the analysis, the inspection, and all of that, and, and gone through sort of the steps there. I think continuing the meeting and sort of trying to get some answers and some more clarification. Um, around that, I think, at least for me, would be helpful, and it sounds like it would be helpful for other members of the, the board as well. Is that, um, is that? I guess, Mr. Patel, you, you know, are you okay with us continuing the hearing?
Yeah, we can continue for September, uh, September meetings, and by then I will have a inspections done.
Okay, great. And then Lori and Bob, do you guys have any other sort of comments? Either tonight, or you provide sort of stuff that you will be looking for, um, from the applicant, uh, hopefully before our next meeting?
You know, pursuant to Kristen Black's email, um, requesting a Title V inspection report. So she can determine whether it's a functioning system or not. And also, um, Mr. Patel is going to have to, if he hasn't done it already. Submit a new set of building plans to the Title V, uh, engineer. That what he is proposing for occupancy is going to be less than the ten thousand gallon per day. Septic load. Because I, I, I really don't remember, to be honest, that if the current set of plans he has in my file. Has a demand of less than ten thousand gallons a day.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Lori, do you have anything else, um, for the applicant at this time?
You're not.
Okay, thank you. So I think it looks like we're, we will continue this hearing, um, to our September, uh, twenty-sixth meeting, uh, at six PM. Mr. Patel, do you have any, uh, anything else to add, uh, before we make a, have a motion?
I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Uh, is there a motion, um, to continue the hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the petition. For a variance submitted by Mr. Patel. For relief from the requirement, um, to submit a disposal works, construction permit issued by the Board of Health with a building permit application. Allow reconstruction of the structure on the property of twenty-seven Belmont Street. Map one oh nine, parcel twenty, in the Highway Business Zoning District and Groundwater Protection Overlay Area Two. To our meeting on September Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at six PM.
Uh, Brad made a motion, and I, Fran on the second, uh, this will be a roll call vote. Brad?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
Aye.
And I have an eye as well. Okay, thank you, Mr. Patel. Look forward to seeing you next, next meeting.
Night.
Uh, okay, next up on the agenda is to consider the petition for a modification to a special permit and special permit in the groundwater protection overlay district submitted by Suzanne Russell to allow the expansion of the existing canine hydrotherapy and rehabilitation center on the property located two seventy-six West Main Street, map eighty-two parcel one twelve in the Business West Zoning District and Groundwater Protection Overlay District Area Three. Okay, uh, Ms. Russell, I just made you a panelist if you can. Please let us know when you can hear us. All right, Suzanne Russell?
Suzanne.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Hello.
Hello?
Hi Suzanne.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, great. Um, so yes, thank you so much, um, for hearing this, this evening. Um, so my proposal is, um, one that, um, I've been at this location originally with the Canine Rehabilitation Center, um, at the corner lot there, um, ten years now. Um, and probably four years ago of memory, um, I was able to take over the, the, um, hydroponics shop which was next door and I built a grooming and a training center. Um, at the training center, we do day school and, um, grooming. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect, sorry. Um, so at this point now, my neighbor, um, had the hair salon. She has moved out in April and my goal is to expand the training center over because the current location is just very small. Um, and so the space, the wall between the two locations is basically a non-load bearing wall. There's some plugs and things like that. Um, and then, um, we would also be able to enjoy an additional entrance. So currently, the training and grooming salon is basically its own little kind of entity there. Um, and there's one entrance where the grooming dogs and the training ducks come in the same door and there's a little bit of congestion periodically. Um, so my hope is to have the entrance to the current training center just be the entrance for the grooming and then the entrance over at the hair salon would be the entrance for training. Um, and then we would just put like, um, what we also have is like kind of a buffer wall between the two reception areas on which lead to the back of the, um, space and then we would be able to do more classes and group training and things like that. Um, and then basically that, that would pretty much be, it'd be a little bit more room for retail and storage and being able to carry more food and, um, canine products that we do a little bit of now. It's more amount of retail, um, but that would allow us to expand, um, more with respect to like the retail department carrying more training and things for our clients and things like that. Um, but it, it wouldn't change the rehab, um, space at all. That would just stay exactly the same.
Okay, great. Thank you, Suzanne. Um, so the, um, the current space and the new proposed space, um, will there be, um, sort of overnight stays by any dogs?
All of the overnight patient stays now, um, are coming to my home. So initially, when we did the rehab center, we were taking occasionally dogs that were down like from Tufts, um, and able to manage them at the, at the clinic on occasion. Um, but now I actually have a rehabilitation center also at my home and I've expanded, um, gone to the zoning board and all of that within my town, which is an hour away. Um, and I have a transport van. So the only dogs that stay with us, um, currently as before were dogs that were, um, debilitated, needed, um, therapy or, um, couldn't go to a regular like boarding center. So they come to my place this day saying, you know, they're really a special needs dog, um, but all of those are transported with me home to, um, my other location and then come back with me if I do work in the morning and stay as day cases. And then we don't do any regular boarding. So any of the training dogs or the group, um, like, um, like they have different groups, um, all are just like by appointment only. So either are just for the day or are there, um, just with their owners and we primarily like the rehab center. So there's really no overnight traffic in that location any longer.
Okay, and, um, will, will there be any, uh, like chemicals or is it strictly like physical training, uh, that you do?
Yeah, like, so that's the thing, like the training center itself, um, is, is pretty much what it is. So it will allow us to do more dogs for day school. Um, but there's no other addition other than cleaning the floors, you know, spraying out the kennels. We just the kennel salt wiping them down and just washing the floors at night. Um, and again, the grooming center will stay the same. So, um, that's, it, it won't really change except there'll be more floor. We're putting the same exact flooring in the new location that's in the old location. Um, the lighting will all stay the same. I, I think the ventilation will all pretty much stay the same. Um, and then Alice, um, the hair salon had a little bathroom. So now the training and grooming people will be able to enjoy having their own bathroom because currently they're coming over to the rehab center. We had enough space to be able to work that out with the town. Um, but so we'll have a restroom for, um, employees, um, at that location and clients. And then we still have the handicap at the, um, rehab. But yeah, nothing short of cleaning walls and floors will, would change at all.
Okay. Um, and so Lori, this is, uh, there was a, um, special permit decision in twenty fifteen, um, that was approved for the, the hydrotherapy center. Um, and so are we are just sort of adding this property to that decision or mending that decision? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Yeah. So the way I wrote the draft decision is as a major modification of the existing special permit to include this unit for the, the uses that she's described.
Correct. Uh, Brad, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, so a couple of basic, uh, blocking and tackling questions. So, uh, Paul, you, Mr. Chair, you had, had mentioned, um, no overnight dogs. Uh, I just want that reconfirmed. I know there's plenty of park in there. You're obviously, your business is doing well. You want to expand. Um, but like how, are you planning on, how many more additional employees are you thinking of bringing on? Are you thinking of, um, in, um, increasing hours early on, late at night, weekends?
Yeah.
Like the basics, you know, you know what I mean? Basic block and tackling questions.
Um, sure, good question. So, um, for staff, it, it's probably going to be like an additional trainer for the day school because we have one trainer and one assistant now. Um, but like I said, it's a little bit, like the space is a little bit limited into like with respect to like how much we can do with the dogs because it's very small. So I'm looking at, um, at probably another trainer to help work with the dogs that are currently there. Um, and then the assistant that I have will probably stay on and then we may run more classes. So for an example, currently, we just do like two classes on Saturday. The people come in with their puppies or there's like, there's a good dog one, there's a good dog two in a C G C class where people can get certified. Um, but this would allow us, again, a lot more indoor space. So we could do more weekend classes, which clients and families really enjoy. Um, the evenings at this point, we're only open two evenings. Um, so that would probably stay the same. Um, and the latest that we are there is like seven, seven thirty. So by the time they clean up and wash the floors, they're out of there around nine thirty. At that point, all the neighbors are gone. So we're not, um, bothering like other businesses. I think the end has the package store. So they're the only other people there that are open late. Um, and then for opening in the morning, we open at seven. So those hours, um, wouldn't change. But we do have drop offs for day school for people that work that do come in at seven. Um, and I mean, already I probably at the most have like up to twelve dogs that are dropping off for day school um, at the location currently. Um, I, I can't imagine that would expand that much more. Um, it just, because we don't have a lot of them for create space. It's more just classroom space that we're looking for. Um, and then, you know, and a lot more ability to use other equipment in the training center as well because again, it's so small. We wanted to do some different, um, like purting classes that utilize like balls and like hockey nets and things like that. So that would allow for people to have more fun with their dogs and more activities with their dogs. Um, but it's not big enough to do like agility, even with a new space. We're kind of, uh, still kind of limited, but it's a lot better than what we have. The, the class sizes now can only be like five. So we'd be able to do a class size of like eight. Um, and that would be a lot more comfortable for the people who just have a lot more room. So it, it would make it better that way. But that, that's pretty much it. The, the space would even allow at its new capacity, it wouldn't be huge, you know? It's limited as well, but it's better than what we have.
Okay. No, thank you. And, and just to reconfirm, no, no dogs will be kept overnight.
Yeah, currently don't do overnight anymore, um, because I'm, you know, the only one that can really feel comfortable managing the really critical care patients at the rehab center. We do have permission to keep dogs overnight and, and, you know, intermittently before I had my space at home, we would do that, but then we would have a staff member stay with them. Like say we had a dog like from Tufts that was, you know, couldn't get up and was very difficult to move like a hundred and fifty pounds. Like I have a four year lift. So we can get them up and around, but at, at one point, rather than trying to bring them back and forth to Tufts, we were keeping them. Um, but now mostly I, I take them home. But I mean, on, a- again, on a rare occasion, there's still, I mean, it could be a possibility that there was something staying at the rehab center if it was down and really intense, but it's not beyond, um, what we had permission for at the rehab center. But the training center is separate. It's, the space is separate. There's really not, um, through the wall access and also that wouldn't change. So the training center and the grooming itself would be part of this new space and the rehab center would, would pretty much stay the same. Uh, sometimes you bring rate, we have dogs over to the training side just for a little bit of socialization or something like that or just, um, you, you know, for like emotion, but that's also us, um, quit selling.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, do you have any other questions at this time?
Uh, not for me, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I didn't hear you. I thought you were talking to me or the rest of the board.
Uh, well, that's the rest of the board. Um, are there any other questions from, uh, any of the other board members at this time? Uh, any other comments from town staff, uh, Lori or Bob? Bob?
Uh, the applicant mentioned training. And I'm currently looking up in the book that training is, um, comes under veterinary clinic. Okay, um, or kennel. Um, actually, it's a kennel and the kennel. I don't, I'm looking it up. I don't think it's allowed in the business areas, um. Forgive me, is she in Business West or is she in, um, dot, dot, Business?
Business West. It is a special permit use.
Special permit.
West district, but it's a separate special permit, so.
Right. So I, I was unaware that it was going to be dog training, um, which, which, which changes the the use slightly to that of a kennel as opposed to a personal, um, service. So I, I, I think she needs to apply for a special permit if she wants to conduct the training of the dogs.
Even doing that with the dogs, that's what we opened the other site for.
But I guess, um, Lori is, is is this just required a new special permit as opposed to adjusting the old one? You know?
And so the, so the issue is that if she needs a special permit for a kennel in addition to the special permit that she currently has, then we would have to advertise it that way. So the, the public ad that we put in was for an expansion of the existing use. It wasn't for a kennel special permit. Um, so we would have to advertise all over again. And actually, we would need her to modify her special permit. So she's requesting a kennel special permit?
I don't know if that name would, would want that because I don't kennel dogs. That's the problem. We don't have permission to do a kennel.
Hey, Paul, can I ask you a question? Is the train, is her term training in regard to the rehabilitation? So rehabilitating the dog as opposed to, you know, uh, training that would fall under the kennel definition? I don't know if that's a question for Suzanne or, or Bob.
Yeah, Jeff, that's what I was kind of alluding to with some of my questions. Is it a kennel versus training? Yeah, I mean.
If it's training for as part of the rehabilitation of dogs that have been injured in the hospital, it's not really training like obedience training. It's more just the, what we, we consider training for physical rehab.
Physical therapy, yeah.
A veterinary clinic may include operating facilities, recovery and laboratory facilities incidental. So I guess Suzanne, can you just kind of describe the, the training that will take place in the new?
So apparently it is, um, like puppy, um, training, um, clients coming in as families for classes, um, working with dogs like one-on-one. So we'll have like a private lesson with somebody. So it is treating, but it's not kenneling. So my landlord, um, and I have an agreement that I, you know, won't keep dogs kennelled, um, because he, that's not what he wants. So we opened the last space, which was next door, um, and built that just for the training. So I had a lot of clients coming in, you know, with debilitated dogs or whatever. And then they're like, oh, well, you know, we got a new puppy or look, you know, my dog can't go to the groomer anymore because they, you know, can't stand and, you know, a multitude of things. So that when the hydroponics store went out, we put in training and grooming over there. Um, so again, it, it's not a kennel, um, but it is a training center. And it is, does do things that are different from what we do at the rehab center. So that's where, um, I, I don't know, you know, but I think if I ask my landlord to pull a permit for a kennel, um, I don't know if he's going to do that because he doesn't want a kennel. Um, and I don't kennel dog. So kenneling to me, to my, to me, from what my training is, I guess, means like boarding. Like, or there's like doggy daycare places that do like overnight boarding. So, um, I'm, you're, I'm sure you've seen them. If you board your dog, you go away on a vacation and there's all kinds of parking like Gibson Kennel or, you know, places like that. Um, that technically is what is a kennel. And then you have to go for a special permit to be able to house, you know, a certain specific number of dogs. So all the dogs are kept in cages and then they're, you know, eliminating and, you know, there's a mod- moderate amount of that which is different. So I think that's I think it's, it's different, but I don't know if I can get away with training without having a kennel license per se. I, I, I don't know, but that, I know that will get sticky with, with Jim because he definitely doesn't want to kennel.
Okay.
I don't know if we can just expand the rehab center, sorry, and then allow training with no kenneling.
I, I, Mr. Chair, I have to, I'm, I'm having difficulty, um, listening to Suzanne's. I I, Mr. Chair, I have to, I'm having difficulty um listening to Suzanne's. Statements, be it's there's something technical going on and I am not hearing everything, but. I I will say this, um the only definition of kennel kennel that matters tonight is the one that's in the zoning book. And not what some other dictionary or somebody else's opinion is, so that's that's what we're going under. If the training portion of your business is absolutely directly related to therapy. I'm okay with it and I'm not gonna be calling it a kennel. If somebody is coming in, bringing a dog. They're not getting any kind of therapy, but they're getting any other kind of training, then there's a kennel.
And that and that is Bob according to the Northborough zoning definitions.
Definition in terms of the the definition.
Other business uses.
Another business uses and the used chart um that falls.
Okay, uh Fran, one sec, Suzanne, can you um just try to answer Bob's question about the type of training?
So it is, it's specific training, it's there, those aren't, the dogs that are in training aren't patients of the rehab center necessarily. They may be clients, um I have difficult dogs that become patients um. That that I mean, sorry, yeah, difficult patients that become training patients as well. But all of the training dogs are specifically in training for whatever.
The the training has to be of a therapeutic nature. You know, um so I would, I I don't even know if I would call it training, I would call it, you know, some sort of different therapy. But if, you know, as long as that training label is in there. That's kind of a hard thing. Um because I know your landlords don't want it.
No, we've been, that's what we've had, though, the last space that we opened when I came to you to build that out. Um that's what we built, the training and the grooming. And that was approved by the town in in conjunction with what I was already doing. So that's a business that's been in place since we got permission from the town and came up um. And were able to build the grooming um and remove the bathroom, all that was um permitted through the town of Northborough. And and that that was underway, so this is just an expansion of the a current um business that we've already had. But I don't think at that point, unless something changed, there was definitely no kenneling allowed.
I mean, the the kennel, the kennel definition did change. In in the interim. Um I don't honestly know what the formal language was, but I knew do know that it changed, the planning board worked uh. Worked quite good to get this thing through uh and the changes. And also whether or not it's used uh allowed in certain zones. I would, I would recommend that, you know, whatever decision, if 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 the special permits granted. That, you know, some sort of wording is included to, excuse me, limit the training. Uh component uh to something that is directly related to therapy and not uh any kind of obedience or tricks or. You know, um socialization with other dogs or things like that.
Uh thanks, Bob, I I guess just Suzanne, just a very direct. Is there obedience training that you plan to administer in this new?
That that's the whole point of doing this is to expand our. Training center, so I guess then I have to go for the boarding or whatever, the kennel, a kennel license, I guess. I guess I'll have to see if I can apply for that, but I already have, you know, spent all this money on the the um. What we've been doing already, so it's only just an expansion of the space and the business that we've already had, well, seemingly have permission to do.
Okay, thank you, um Fran, you have a, your hand up?
Yeah, so a couple of things, just uh uh Mr. Chair, just to for the applicant. The term kennel in our zoning includes training of animals that are not the property of the owner or the establishment. So this, uh we have two things here that. If we granted a special permit for a kennel, we could certainly put limitations or conditions on it that. Uh um preclude you from having any overnight actual kennel clients, which would hopefully satisfy your landlord. Secondly, I I don't know, I'm looking at the the decision from two thousand fifteen. There's nothing that says anything about training or grooming, so I don't know when that occurred. But it's possible that there is, you know, something in between. But we can get to a point where training would be allowed if. We get to that special permit process and then we just say, no. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I guess, to staff and just say, but no overnight boarding.
Okay.
Yeah, so I. Right, I thi- I guess Fran, to your point, it's. What's before us and what's been advertised was an extension of a special permit from twenty fifteen. And it sounds like in reality, it's really just should be a new special permit, which. Both a veterinary clinic and a kennel are allowed through the Board of Appeals, through the special permit process. And so it sounds like that's probably the the best bet in terms of how this should be classified. Um based on Laura's comments from earlier, um. Suzie, you you have your hand up? Uh you you're on mute right now, that's good.
Sorry, I put my hand down thinking and thought I was unmuting myself, um that first of all, the um. Training is kind of like behavioral therapy for dogs, I've seen, I I had a naughty dog once, a beagle. We we are always beagle owners and they're very naughty, um but anyways, that's like, that was just a side thought. Um so it could be like behavioral therapy, um but also I think what the applicant was. Also trying to explain and correct me if I'm wrong, Suzanne, was. That you, so you had the original, which was this this special permit, and then you expanded. And you, that's when the grooming, is that when the grooming and the training was added?
Yes, exactly, and I came to the town and I I it was, they. I guess I was confused because I wasn't asked to expand my permit, I just had requested to expand the business. To include a training and grooming center, um and then. You know, we had to make some modifications to the space um which were approved, um but the permit was never changed, so. I think that where I guess I'm confused because I, you know, I didn't, I wasn't aware.
Okay, so that so that part was like approved because that expansion was a. Was approved, but that didn't fall under the special permit, so that's what we were all missing. When we were looking for it, but I was just like trying to figure out the timeline.
Thank you, it was about five years almost now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess, are there any other questions or comments from the board at this time? Any other questions or comments from staff, I I mean, I guess. Do we know, do we know that if the, how big of a change the definitions for. Kennel or veterinary clinic occurred within the last several years? And whether that definition is part of the sort of. Cause for for concern here, or uh Bob?
I I. I I'd have to go back to probably three or four years worth of um zoning codes. To see what what exactly changed in the language. And unfortunately, I don't have that tonight.
Okay, um Lori, do you um, sorry, you you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I um I suspect that the change in the definitions. Uh hearkens back to the two thousand nine zoning rewrite, although that's just a guess, because I've only been here for a year and a half. Um my suggestion on this particular application is if the um. If the applicant could withdraw her cousin, current application. Um and then refile a new application, then we can advertise that. Um and put it on the agenda for the September twenty fifth, uh I think it's September twenty fifth, meaning.
Six, it's number twenty six.
Twenty six, thank you. Um other than that, you would have to render a decision on this application, so the simplest thing to do would be to um. Just withdraw the application. And refile it for the correct special permit, which would be a kennel special permit.
Question, Lori, um see.
Uh so yeah, uh Suzanne.
So, wh- how about this, what if I um tried to expand the permitting for for both? So say we expand the permitting for the whole space for um and go for the the that um. For that meeting in September to apply for the special permit for the kennel with the restrictions. That were suggested so that Jim would be comfortable, but also expands the permit for the rehab center. In the chance that if we did end up for some reason changing the space, so say that. Um we decided to take some of that space and use it for rehab, then we wouldn't have to go. For another modification that the whole entire space would allow the veterinary piece. And then just the space that um I'm applying for would allow kennel. Um then could we get it under um goal?
A challenge with that approach is has to do with the toxic and hazardous chemicals. So this property is located within the groundwater protection overlay district. So right now, the application that you submitted says that there will be no toxic or hazardous wastes used. Whereas if you're expanding the um. The veterinary component of the operation, then there is the potential for toxic and hazardous waste. So you would just have to apply for that. Um permit as well. Or would that be a modification, Bob, would that be a modification or a new special permit because it's a new space?
Probably a new special permit.
Yeah, so it would be instead of applying for one special permit, so right now you've already applied for the modification. So if if your goal is to expand uh your operation, uh having to do with the. You know, the vet operation into the space, then your current application will cover that. Uh however, we have to know about the toxic and hazardous waste. And so we would need, you know, some sort of assessment done by the town engineer as to whether you're complying with the groundwater. Bylaw. If.
I mean, which would be fine because we really don't have any, we only just use the swimming pool, which is, there's no toxic waste. So we wouldn't have toxic waste um expanding in either way, even if we did um. Expand the center, because it's primarily just patients coming for rehab and then leaving. So the you, even if the use were to expand to the current training and grooming salon, the toxic waste wouldn't change.
So are are you dispensing or storing any medication? No, so it's just like your typical household hazardous waste, like cleaning supplies, that's that's all you have there?
We use chlorine, Fabulo soda, clean the floors and chlorine bleach, um chlorine in the pool and baking soda. Um and that's it, and then just regular cleaning supplies, so we don't dispense medications, we don't have any hospitalized animals there. Um so even though it fell under veterinary care for some reason, um. It you, you know, and I do have a veterinarian on staff who oversees some of the cases for with respect to care just because of the insurance companies. So some insurance companies require um a veterinarian to oversee the cases at my facility and other cases. Other um insurance companies allow veterinary feral, um and then we just in the records that way, so. Um I do have technically have veterinary care, but it really is just with respect to like overseeing the physical therapy. Because that's pretty much all we do. And even at my home, I have um an underwater treadmill, a water tank and same thing, it has chlorine and baking soda. For the um to manage the water supply and it's a self-contained system, so we're not constantly reusing the water. We just use the water from the swimming pool um to feed the the water terminals, it's it's nothing toxic.
So maybe the best strategy to move forward is to continue the public hearing to the September twenty sixth meeting. And in the meantime, you can submit uh the updated application, which actually you should submit tomorrow. Um because the deadline was today for the September twenty sixth meeting. So you you're familiar with the application, so we don't need the plans all over again, we just need the new application form. And then the fee. So you could submit that and then. Uh the, we could wrap the the modification of the existing special permit. And the new special permit into a single decision, which could be rendered on the twenty six.
I think that's the best thing, because I'm held up anyway.
Um I I will say, I I am looking at a zoning bylaw, or Northborough zoning bylaws from twenty eighteen. Um and as you can imagine, the definition back then, this is twenty eighteen, so prior to the last decision. The definition of a veterinary clinic uh looks to be exactly the same as it currently exists. Uh in our zoning bylaws today, but the definition of a kennel in twenty eighteen was. A facility for breeding, sale, boarding, or trading of more than three dogs or other domestic non-farm animals, and that's it. As opposed to what's in the current bylaws today, just for FYI. Um Jeff, we, Jeff, we then you had your hand up?
I th- I thought the original uh special permit was twenty fifteen and I just wondered if. If based on fifteen to sixteen or seventeen, if there, this was a allowed, is it, would this fall under any kind of grandfathered use if there was a change? Is something else to consider for next month?
And and Mr. Chair, to follow up on that, in twenty twenty, we changed the definition of a kennel to use the state definition.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying way back in twenty eighteen, it was only five years ago.
It's way back. Uh Suzie.
And um Suzanne, when did you add the, when did you have the um the second? The training part added?
Sure, it was, I I mean, at least four years ago. Um I added that, it was when I honestly, I should know that date, but I I can't remember at this point. Um it was probably four and a half years ago when the hydroponics um shop went out. Um I I wanted to expand to include grooming and training. Because the grooming was a huge problem for my clients, so we were running them up to what was the Clipper Barn. To do the the grooming on the handicap dogs, which was really a challenge, so we um. Um took the space and built it out, um and I did come up to the town because I had to remove the bathroom in that space. To put in the grooming salon, um and to um, we had to look at the space to make it like all one space. Because the, there were two bathrooms in the primary location, and then there was only one bathroom in the new location. And then there was only one bathroom in the new location. Um, so we were able to kind of look at it as one entity is what I was told um at the time. And they were, that's all they told me. And so I got permission to remove the bathroom, build the grooming center. And then the front became the training center at that time. So then that became Northborough Grooming and Training. But you know, basically, um, a part of the same Northbrook Kinnick Rehab.
And do would there be a building permit on that? And that that would be a question for anyone?
I think so because I had to come up to pull the permitting.
Okay, alright.
So there should be because I I did up and got permission. I'm I'm quite certain it was from Bob at the time.
Okay, so maybe we can figure out the dates and the definitions then too. So maybe the grandfathering is there, Jeff?
I I I think grandfathering is for the grooming service. I mean, that's what it seems like that.
Right.
Because uh due just due to the fact that the definitions did change in twenty twenty. Um, Jeff Grabowski?
Uh, yeah, I just I did want to note that kennel is defined in a a couple of different places in the the codes. I don't know uh where you got that definition from, Mr. Chair. Um, is the one that I think applies here is in section, chapter seven, under use regulations. It's defined also also in chapter two and I'm not sure about other places, but chapter two says um that's where it refers to breeding, buying, selling, or boarding.
And I I mean, I will say again, Mr. Chair, it I'm looking at Article thirty nine that passed at the town meeting in twenty twenty where we changed the definition of kennel to include training.
Sorry, Jeff, where where are you seeing the the first definition? In chapter two, you said?
Yeah, chapter two. Uh, section twenty four, two twenty four. Which is general legislation.
Oh, oh, okay. Sorry, I want to look at zoning.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, so I guess given uh the information from the applicant, uh Fran, do you have your hand raised or is that? Yep, um, so I guess given given the information from the applicant um and some of the changes that have occurred uh with the zoning definitions, um Lori, what what you would you suggest is the process um for the board? I mean, I I think, should we have them withdraw?
Well, you know, I've got like historic zoning books in my office at work. So what I can do is look to see what the definition of kennel was uh and veterinary clinic back in um two thousand fifteen and then again in two thousand eighteen. And then Bob and I can discuss amongst ourselves and decide whether you need to file a new application for a kennel license or whether you'd be grandfathered under the old definition. Should kennel not include training uh in two thousand eighteen? So maybe just uh I I'd suggest just sitting tight. Bob and I will get our heads together and do the research tomorrow morning. And then we'll let the applicant know whether they should file a new application or not. And in the meantime, I would recommend just continuing this public hearing until the September twenty sixth meeting. So that we can uh be sure that we're doing the right thing.
Okay. Thanks, Lori. Um, Suzanne, does that um does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Okay. So I guess if there are no other questions or comments uh from the board, um, get a motion to continue the hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue uh the hearing for two seventy six West Main Street. Map eighty-two parcel one twelve in Business West District. Um, with the petition for a modification to a special permit and special permit in the groundwater protection overlay district submitted by Ms. Russell to the meeting on uh Tuesday, September twenty sixth at six P M.
I had been motion, Fran, seconded. This will be a roll call vote. Uh, Brad?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Suzie?
Hi.
Jeff Grabowski?
Hi.
Yeah, and I have an eye as well. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Suzanne, we will um uh would would suggest you call the office sometime mid-morning tomorrow.
Sounds great. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, would anyone be against taking a quick three-minute break since we've been here for about two and a half hours so far? Alright, so we can adjourn for about.
Yes, you have a minute to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay, five-minute recess. Thank you.
Hey, Lori. I have two inspections tomorrow morning.
Okay.
At nine. Uh, and then probably nine thirty. So I will probably dig back in the office. Probably somewhere around ten.
Okay, yeah, I'll take out the zoning bylaws right when I get in. And so I'll have those ready for you.
Yeah.
To discuss when you get in, maybe when you when you arrive, if you can stop by my office.
Yeah, I'll just come right into your office. Um, Fran emailed um the twenty twenty um, Article twenty-nine, which redefines the kennel.
Yes.
I think it also um changed the use chart. And I I think that's the, I think that's the uh timeline we need to uh think about.
Okay, yeah, I'll pull up the two thousand nineteen. That should do it.
Yeah. Yeah, because I remember it was during my tenure here. Um, I've only been here six years, so it doesn't go back eons.
That definitely helps narrow down the playing field here.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Okay, we're all back.
Yeah, Bob, who are those dinosaurs that were on the board in uh working town staff back in twenty fifteen, huh?
Twenty fifteen? Uh, well, I don't know. I wasn't here. What was it? No, I was not.
Brad, you were.
I was, that's right.
I wa- I was in twenty fifteen, I was working with Lori, but we were both in a different town.
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha. Okay, I I I think it's really interesting, though, just the fact that um just we've evolved the definition of kennel. And it just kind of just made this application not not more difficult. But it's like, oh, we got to think about the way we originally thought of a kennel versus how we think of a kennel today, you know? It's like, things change, you know, way back in uh way back in twenty fifteen is uh Mr. Chair.
That that is a a perfect example of when institutional knowledge is key.
Yeah.
Because, of course, you know, I've just been here a year and a half. I would think that it hasn't changed since two thousand uh nine, but obviously I was proven wrong.
Mm-hmm. What are you gonna do?
Okay, I I mean, I don't think I really need to reopen our meeting and all, but um I guess um, we can uh start with uh seventy-eight um uh seventy-eight West Main Street um and sort of the the closing of the case. Does anyone wanna take a quick stab at it or I can give my first point on it? Does anyone?
I know.
Fred, uh Fred?
Sure, well, I'll start. I mean, I think it is a good use of the property. I think if we don't have some type of foot traffic, we're never going to have a downtown. It's modest in its approach with only four units, two bedrooms each, so we're not talking about a lot of people. Um, and it's rental and therefore the landlord will be held accountable if there's a snow issue, if there's a parking issue, if there's anything else. And uh I think we need the inventory. So I am, I I'm thrilled that they made all the accommodations to the um uh conservation issues. And I think that it should, we should move forward with it um with the conditions that have been um recommended.
Okay, thanks, Fred. Uh, Jeff, Leland?
I would agree with Fran. I think it's clearly improves the property and the lot, the driveway and everything that hadn't been taken into consideration years and years ago. And then adding to the housing and apartment issue, it clearly is making the project a better lot next to Cold Harbor Brook. So I would be in favor of it if I had a vote.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Uh, Suzie? Um, you had your hand raised?
Yes, making sure I was unmuted. I've been raising my hand to make sure that I wasn't like um putting my hand down and not unmuting myself anymore. Um, so my one problem that I did have was the conservation committee like saying that they still didn't like the west hand, the west side jutting out, but they were okay with it because of all the other accommodations. Um that part just still like bothers me. I do like that they did change all of the comments that we had from the first I don't one or two meetings. I can't remember um how many times they've come before us. I think just one, maybe two. Um, and then my my other part was just like the, you know, like they're supposed to have a substantial hardship. And I I never saw that coming for us. Like, I like the idea of apartments. They could still do apartments in this building. They could still make all the changes to the parking lot um without making, without going out west with the building. Um, but I didn't, I don't know what the substantial hardship is with the lot. And never really heard that in what the re, you know, how they could not make any money off of this property without us granting them relief and with the requested the requested relief, what the substantial hardship is, basically. Those are, those are my points. Um, but I like the, I mean, they could still do apartments. They could still make the improvements to the parking lot. Um, but it's just, I don't like that west, that west part, but that was it.
Okay, thanks, Suzie. Um, Lori?
Yeah, I I just wanted to clarify, um, the variance request is because in that particular, so they do meet the minimum lot size requirement for a multi-family within uh the downtown, uh I think it's downtown business district. However, they are also within the groundwater protection overlay district, which has a larger minimum lot size requirement. So the minimum lot size requirement in the groundwater protection overlay district area three is twenty thousand square feet. So they are shy by eight thousand nine hundred and forty-one square feet, just to clarify. And of course, uh, the house and the lot was created uh in the eighteen hundreds. So the house was built in eighteen ninety. Um, and I believe that bylaw was adopted in nineteen seventies.
Lori, can you, sorry, can you just say that those numbers again for the the lot size?
Sure. So the minimum lot size requirement for groundwater protection overlay district area three is twenty thousand square feet. They don't have twenty thousand square feet. Um, so this parcel has eighteen thousand. Wait a minute. So the property, the lot was created in nineteen fifty-five. And the groundwater protection overlay district was created in nineteen eighty-six. So the subject property contains eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet of area. So because the the parcel predates the creation of zoning, it does not meet the minimum lottery law requirement for the groundwater protection overlay district for a multi-family home.
Right, but it's only short fifteen hundred, not eight thousand. Ish, give or take a couple of feet.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. I think it was like the first line on your your comments thing where you're talking about. I think it was like the first line on your, your comments thing where you're talking about the variants and stuff, but. Um. Does anyone else have any other? I, I, I guess, um, so I guess what I'll just say is. Um, you know, I, I do appreciate um all the work that was put into this by the applicant, um, you know, just to kind of get to the point, um, I am in favor of this project. Um, I think, you know, going through the, the variance and the special permits and stuff. Um, there's sort of a balance that you have to have, or at least how I thought about this in terms of. You know, sort of, you know, going through the variance and the hardship, and you know, like you said, it's. The property lot lines predates or the groundwater um uh adjustments, so you know, the granting the variance for the fifteen hundred square feet, which is really not that much. Um, I, I think is not an issue in my opinion, um, in terms of the special permits for the multifamily. You know, I think multifamily, there are, there are parts of town that, you know, multifamily um is better suited, um downtown neighborhood. Downtown business, in my estimation, are those parts of town where, you know, sort of the, the more dense housing exists. Um, other parts of town, which the townspeople have said. You know, multifamily is not allowed, you know, multifamily in this part of town is allowed with a special permit. Which is what they're looking for, um, I also like a lot of the plans and the work that was done. And the thought that was given to um. Sort of protecting some of the groundwater facilities, whether it's the rain garden or the um sort of the, the area that's just north of the parking lot, I mean. You know, there, there are concerns with the size of the parking lot, but I also look to the current parking lot, which is. Much larger, right, where, you know, you can park. Many more cars, you can have better turning radiuses where, you know, the whole point of this is to sort of get that impervious surface. Out of the groundwater area, right, which I think that they. You know, it, it took a while for them to get to this point, but. The stormwater infiltration systems, the snow removal, sort of the um, the drainage system that exists to the west side of, of, of the property, I think are all. Uh, benefits to the property than what currently exists there today, which. Is not very much, um. You know, I, I do think going through the process, though, was, was a, was a great uh, a thing for our board, you know, having conservation. Look at it, go through their process, providing us with some feedback, um, I think that that was, even though maybe, maybe not a, a necessity. I think it provided us, our board with more, um. You know, our board of more, you know, background, at least for me, you know, just trying to understand. What impact does it have when you're sort of building within a wetland or a buffer zone? And having, you know, somewhat who we would consider the experts, the conservation commission, look at that. And sort of provide and give their opinion on um sort of that, I think was helpful uh in this case, so, you know, I appreciate the time that was taken by. Our conservation board and by the applicant to sort of go in front of other boards as well. Um. You know, I, I, again, the, the snow removal, I think for me was a big thing, having the, you know, the, the removal of that stuff. Having the stormwater infiltration um was also, was also a, a positive in my opinion. Um, and I think I'll, I'll stop there, Brad, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I think um. I want to reiterate uh what you said, I appreciate um all the hard work that town staff and the applicant has. Uh, put into this, uh, I think, um, well, I don't think, I know, I was the one that made the big stink about them going in front of conservation. And just gave myself a little more peace of mind is. You know, it's, i- is, are they asking for a lot? Yes, they are. However, it is within reason, in my opinion, and the fact that they went in front of conservation, they did their due diligence. And they are keeping the uh historical structure of the building intact. And abiding by all the conditions that we have asked. So I, I, I am in favor of, of this project. I just wanted to say thank you to the applicants and town staff for. You know, dealing with me and, and just making sure, like, we just, you know, dotted, dotted our i's and crossed our t's. And made sure we got the right boards in front of us to make sure everything is okay. So thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Um, Laura, you have your hand up?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, that's leftover from before. Uh, but just to clarify, the issue with the variance, I, I started uh. To be concerned that I had a typo in my decision. Uh, the issue is the interpretation that they need the entire twenty thousand. Square feet within the groundwater protection overlay district area three. That they can't use. The amount of land that's in the area two to satisfy the minimum lot size requirement. So that is why the variance request is eight thousand nine hundred and forty-one square feet. Even though they currently have eighteen thousand um. And change square feet. So that, that is that kind of confusing twist there.
Okay. Thanks, Laurie. Um. Does anyone else have any other uh comments? Questions or anything at this time? Okay, uh Suzie?
Yeah.
Again, you raised my physical hand, um. I, so for like the building of the fence and for the restoration area and everything, who's, who would be checking up on that? Is that um the conservation officer, or is that Bob? Like who checks on all this material to make sure that this is up to these standards, or is it just us?
It's a combination. So it's a combination of the conservation agent, uh so he will be enforcing the um. The order of conditions requirements. And then Bob, who will be enforcing a variety of the requirements. Then we have our um town engineer who is. Going to be the assistant DPW director, who will be looking at the stormwater mitigation measures. And then I'm gonna be going out there and counting parking spaces and looking at fencing and uh curbing and. Counting trees and bushes to make sure that they comply with those requirements, so. Um, we all tell Bob, so Bob tells us. When an applicant is ready for an occupancy permit. And that mobilizes all of us to do our last inspection. Um, and then we let Bob know when we're satisfied, and he doesn't issue the occupancy permit until. All of the various departments are satisfied.
So nobody knows what's going on. Only kidding, um, like, like Laurie said, um. You know, I can review the plans, but I'm not gonna release the permit. Until I have all the appropriate copies, um, the conservation agent has gone out and do. His due diligence even before any earthwork or even demolition starts, um. So, um, and then like Laurie said. The, she goes out and checks, the town engineer goes out and checks, make sure all the final documentation that's required. As set in the final decision from the boards. Um, are all satisfied, you know, make sure all the paperwork is done. Um, and then they get an occupancy permit.
Thanks, Bob.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, so I guess Laurie, just in terms of your draft decision. Um, I believe. You know, we will obviously want to include sort of the conservation's order of conditions, um. Is, is that gonna be referenced in our decision?
Sure, I can, I can absolutely reference it, so what I would uh put it under is the exhibits. So now that that's been received, I will add it to the exhibits list.
Okay, and that exists separate from the conditions that we have uh set forth, right?
Correct. Correct, so the conservation commission and the, their staffers and the conservation agent enforces their conditions. And then uh me and the. Uh, building inspector and the assistant TPW director will enforce these conditions. Your conditions.
Okay. Uh, and then I think the only other thing um that was brought up in the meeting that may, that's probably not on the um. The draft decision is the sort of striping. Uh, and no parking sign um to the. East of the, the. Garbage disposal truck.
Yes, I propose adding that under um. Condition C, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall do the following. So I will um add the condition saying modify the site plan to include that striping as well as the installation of a no park sign.
Okay. Uh, does anyone else have any other? Questions or comments that they would like to? Bring for this case? Otherwise, I think we can uh.
Good, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Fred.
I move that we grant a waiver for section zero seven zero nine zero three zero C two A. With the requirement that no parking shall be located closer to the front lot line that. And the front line of the principal structure nearest to the front lot, as depicted on the site plan, approximately three parking spaces are located closer to the front lot line. Than the front line of the building.
So Laurie, we have to take votes on the two waivers and then the final draft decision?
Yes, so the waiver should be voted separately.
Okay. Um. Fran made a motion?
I'll second.
Uh, Brad seconded for the first waiver, uh, there's a roll call vote, uh, Fred?
Hi.
Uh, Brad?
Hi.
Uh, Suzie? Uh, you're on mute, so.
I, I raised my hand, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, Jeff, Jeff Grabowski?
Hi.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Uh, Fran, do you want to tackle the second waiver?
Sure, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a partial waiver of the requirement. From section zero seven zero nine zero three zero C four A. For the parking facilities with more than five parking spaces shall be boarded on all sides except for the required access drives with a buffer strip. At least ten feet in width, the buffer east of the parking lot varies in width from four feet at its narrowest to ten feet at its. In width at its widest point.
Second.
Fran made a motion for the second waiver, and Brad uh seconded, a roll call vote, Fran?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Uh, Suzie?
I really hate the parking lot, I have to vote now, I'm sorry.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
Hi.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Um. Yep, Fred?
I move that we grant a variance of eight thousand nine hundred and forty-one. Feet, square feet of area to satisfy the minimum lot requirement of twenty thousand square feet within groundwater protection overlay district area three. Per section seven zero three zero three zero B two of the North Grove zoning bylaws.
Okay, uh, the motion was made um for the variance.
Second.
Uh, Brad seconded. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Fran?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Uh, Suzie?
No.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
Hi.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Okay.
Okay, I'm now, but on, on the next three special permits. That each individually, and at which point do I reference the conditions in the draft memo?
Uh, you can make a single motion to include all of the special permits, and then I would suggest making them subject to finding of facts. One through twenty-one and conditions of approval A through O.
Okay, Mr. Chair. I move that we grant a special permit for the multifamily use in the downtown business district per zoning bylaw section seven zero five zero three zero. Special permit for the multifamily use in groundwater protection overlay district three. And to extend that use up to ten feet into the more restricted groundwater protection overlay district two. Per zoning bylaw section seven zero seven zero one zero C three and five. And special permit with site plan approval from per section seven zero three zero five zero A two. To allow the multifamily dwelling containing four units. And construction of fifteen hundred eighty-eight square foot building addition. Parking and associated improvements on the pro- subject property located seventy-eight West Main Street with condition safeguards and limitations. On time and use set forth as follows in findings numbers one through twenty-one and conditions A through O.
And a partridge in a pear tree, sorry. Fran made a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski, uh, Fran made a motion, Jeff Grabowski seconded the motion. Um, we will do a roll call vote, uh, Fran?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
Hi.
Uh, Brad Blanchett?
Hi.
Suzie?
No.
Uh, and I am an I. Okay. Um. So. Uh, next up on the agenda, um, so joint public hearing with planning board on September fifth at six P M regarding the planning board fees. Board of Appeals Regulations for Hiring Outside Consultants. Um. Laurie, you want to just give like a? A brief? I think we talked about this last time, but this is the official public hearing um for people to weigh in. It'll be a joint meeting with, you know, the zoning board of appeals and the planning board for us to discuss the, the regulations, um. And then, you know, for, for any public input and at, at that point.
Correct, yep, so uh the ZBA will be voting separately on uh the fee schedule for the ZBA. As well as the fifty-three G rules and regulations. And then the planning board will only be voting on um modifications to the planning board fee schedule.
Does anyone, uh, Suzie?
Unmuted, okay. Um, are we, I'm just wondering if we knew when we were gonna um have a new engineer? Or not a new engineer, but start working with a new engineering firm or that process, will that be after? We go through this um meeting, or what's the timeline on that for us?
I am happy to report that an assistant TPW director has been hired. And she will begin on September fifth. So I do not anticipate that she will attend the planning board or ZBA meetings unless there is. A particularly complicated issue uh that I really need her to explain. Other than that, um, she will be supplying. Uh, review letters and doing inspections for mostly small scale projects. And then we'll be relying on our new DPW, I mean, I'm sorry, our new engineering consultant. Uh, for larger scale projects, so one of the things that I, I wanted to talk to both you and the planning board about. At the September fifth meeting is the process for hiring a consulting engineer. Um, so there are a couple of different ways of going about, about it. Um, because there isn't a huge amount of work um that would be provided, we're not inundated with development proposals that require. An engineer's uh effort. At this time, um, we could go through a simple process of just soliciting three quotes. And then deciding amongst the three quotes. Or we could go through the, the formal process of um. Of uh going through the procurement process and, and putting an ad in comp buys. Uh, oftentimes that results in many more proposals, uh. I think at the. I think at the most I've ever received was in the area of thirteen, which is a lot to go through. So that's one of the things I, I wanted to hear from you folks, whether you wanted the scale down effort of soliciting three quotes or whether you wanted to go through the, the big process. And then, of course, there's the creation of a selection committee. So my proposal is to have one member from the CONCOM, one member from the ZBA and one member from the planning board to go through all of the various proposals, which will then have to be ranked. And then there's most likely an interview process, so that's something I wanted to talk to you on the fifth to, to see if I could get some sort of consensus between you and the planning board members for how you want to attack this process of hiring a consulting engineer.
Will our new assistant DPW person be at the September fifth meeting or no? I would just like to meet her.
Probably not, probably not. It's going to be our first day.
I know, that would be scary.
All right. But like I said, you know, if there's, if there's a, a matter requiring her attention, then certainly I, I will bring her to a future meeting.
That's exciting. Thank you.
That's right, throw her into the fire, Lori, come on.
Oh, and the good news is that she, she worked for the town of Wellesley for like eighteen years. So this is her first job, I think maybe her first or second job out of college because she was in Wellesley for virtually her entire professional career. So she definitely has staying power, which is awesome.
Good. Great.
There. Okay. Any other questions for Lori with regards to the planning board meeting, joint meeting? Okay. So moving to the A and Rs, lot releases and bonds, performance guarantee release for Dunia Gardens, formerly two thirty-nine Hudson Street.
Yeah, so I've been going back and forth with Fred about this one. He had solicited some a request for information from town council and did not receive it as of today. So I am actually not prepared for you to vote on this at this point. We did receive some last minute information that arrived right before this meeting suggesting that the bank that originally provided the tripartite agreement is no longer in existence. In which case, there really is nothing for you to release. If the, if the bank doesn't exist, then the agreement no longer exists. So I suspect that you won't actually have to vote on anything because the, the burden is no longer there. But we're awaiting confirmation from town council as to whether that is in fact the case or whether you, you folks need to, to make a vote. So stay tuned, we're gonna push that to a future meeting.
Okay. Great, thanks, Lori. We have minutes from the June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Fran?
I move that we accept the minutes as amended. I did reach out to Michelle today to let her know that on, I think page five, she wrote, I made a motion to consider a petition when we actually made a motion to continue the petition for three oh five, three oh nine. And she is going to amend the minutes to reflect that correction.
Okay. Did anyone else have any other issues with the minutes from June? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Fran made a motion to approve the minutes and Brad seconded. Roll call vote. Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Suzy?
Aye.
Jeff Grabowski?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, so we have our next two meetings in September, September fifth and September twenty-sixth. Both are at six P M.
That was my question.
Yep, yep, both are at six P M. And then finally, just for, for those who don't know, Jeff Leland has, because of other things going on in his life, has decided to resign from the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, I just want to take this time to say thank you, Jeff, for all your years of service. You know, appreciate all the work that you have done and all of your insight. And so, you know, I, I really do appreciate your sort of your level of insight with regards to legal matters and sort of obviously being a town resident for so many years and having sort of the historical perspective, but I just wanted to just take a moment to say thank you very much. I know, or I should say, we all know what it's like to serve on these boards. And so, you know, appreciate everything you've done over the last several years as a member of the ZBA and as an alternate as well. So, you know, on behalf of the board, thank you very much and, you know, appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much, Paul and everybody. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything else. Yes, Fran?
Oh, I was going to move that we adjourn, sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 I don't want to cut you off.
All right, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, Fran made a motion to adjourn. Brad seconded, roll call vote. Fran?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
Suzy?
Aye.
Go Jeff Leland?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. All right, thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone.
See, see you in a couple of weeks. Good night.
Thanks.